With a out of contract order to upgrade Charter Spectrum, our current provider, for bandwidth to 50 meg, starting as soon as, unless, unless there's a provision to talk about it further, have it start immediately so that we can go what's called out of contract on February 10th until we get the full thing done and we'll be able to have the live streaming, the bandwidth issues will be resolved, at least partially, although we won't be able to finalize the phone stuff, at a slight premium, but it'll be a month-to-month service. We'll go what's called out of contract, it's a month-to-month service. We're anticipating full resolution no later than six months, so we're in real good stead on that, but this'll give us a little bit more time to potentially get one or more logistics companies to get involved in the combination of the VoIP, the bandwidth, how we link the six different remote sites to City Hall, all of those different things, so that everybody's on the same system, both phone and computer-wise. So that will be something that, if somebody wants to have us hold off until you all get to discuss it, that should come up in the new business, or at the end of this, to put on the agenda for the next meeting.
On that 50 meg, what's the upload speed on that?
Over my head. Not certain.
Does he know that's, that's what really we need to look at?
Right.
That's, that's the bandwidth that we need to find for the video.
Right.
And to his point, since we'll go to month-to-month, I mean, even if it's just a couple of months, will there be enough time that you could get the actual bandwidth that you're gonna wind up getting ultimately? Just go ahead and get that down, and then you can evaluate whether or not that actually results or issues. I hope we're gonna get into something later on, if you like.
Well, what we're hoping to do is to get 100, but have several sites on the same 100, so we can dole out some to each unit based upon their usage, with us having about 50 here. That's the goal. We're, the current proposal that we've got bids on is 100 meg, so that we can divvy out 10 megs to three sites and five megs to the other three sites, so that we'll still have a little over 50 meg in total bandwidth for the phone, internet, et cetera. Some of them have one computer station, one phone, and one employee, eight hours a day, max.
But again, I mean, it's not, it's not always the download speed that you're looking at, like when you're doing VoIP and stuff like that, and you're gonna wanna know what that upload is, so that's, you gotta kinda see how that's gonna be spread out as well. Because if you're only getting like five megs upload, then you're still gonna divvy that out to the different, three different servers that you're talking about as well. So I would just make sure that we have enough upload speed.
Yeah, upload is, yeah, you guys are speaking way over my head.
Download is from the internet.
No, no, that part I understand. I know what they are, but what they mean, beyond me. I just, I know the mega, the bandwidth of 50 is what we're shooting, we were always shooting 50 in here, when we started talking about pulling the other sites in to have them on the same VPN, 100 was the minimum necessary, so.
But what, what he's saying, though, is that when the vendors talk bandwidth, how many megabytes are getting, they're talking download, unless you specifically say, what am I getting upload, you don't know.
And, and ultimately, these, these will be discussions that we have. My goal is to, here's my big point, I guess, if we wait until after February 10th, we cannot get it without doing a three-year deal. We can't get the temporary upload, a temporary increase in bandwidth.
I'd be okay to test it out, just to make sure it works.
Yeah, that's kinda what I wanted to get out there, is that because of the time factor in getting everything worked out, we just wanted to verify that at least upsizing to 50 now will, the good thing is, it does, like, as you've mentioned, it gives us a test, so that we're not on an alpha or a beta, we've, we've run it a little bit, so.
I guess along that line, have you been having trouble with internet, just in general here? I mean, I know residents have been really complaining on the neighborhood groups about their internet service with Spectrum.
And I think that's across the board, everybody's having it. Internet service, we're having it, especially when, on evenings, when we try to upload, and if we have a large contingent of employees come in that have the smartphones for emails and stuff, because every one of them were set up on this wifi, 90% of them automatically click and automatically pull up, so they wipe out the wifi, like that. So those are some of the aspects of it that we're trying to, but yes, from a performance standpoint, yes. Some of it, we're not 100% certain the cause of it, but when it's happening in every part of the building at various times of the day, we think it's problematic. I understand that with our IT consultant, that he doesn't see, when he looks at our records, that we're pushing the bandwidth stuff too much, but I don't know, once again, this is over my head, whether the upload factor is not being measured in it, or whatever, for some reason, I know we're not getting great service. So this'll also allow us to, give us a little bit of breathing room to work out the bugs on the VOI, the best VoIP system we can get. We've gotta have that.
With that, because I, this is a mistake I learned recently, when you get your VoIP phones, get a couple extras, we had a couple headsets go bad, and we had to wait to get replacements in, because you can't run down, run down the dollar general by.
Yeah, yeah, they're not, they're not easy to pick up.
Get a couple extra, learn from my mistake.
Sure.
And then, as they set it up, you should be able to prioritize the device, except when you get all those other people in, if that one has priority access over others.
Yeah, and that apparently is all set up in the system that whether it's an upload is more important than download, whether, which phone sits, locations have the highest priority.
Generally, the, from what, from what I think's probably gonna happen, is they're gonna set up a class of service where the VoIP can take priority, so that way they'll be able to make the phone calls, and then everything, they'll divvy out the rest of the bandwidth.
Yeah, that's, that, language has been used in my presence, I don't know what it means, it's been used.
For that, it's all on your service.
Yeah, and apparently, it's all inside the system that it can be programmed.
So I just wish you heard that.
Yeah, I just want it to work, I don't care how.
I'll hack into it on day one.
The next item is the Transportation Master Plan. This was written, the staff report was written Thursday morning, Thursday evening. The Planning Commission meeting we held, brought this up to them as well, they had requested that they be directly involved in the recommendation from staff, so instead of bringing this, we'll have to wait till the February 1st meeting to get a recommendation from the Planning Commission as to who the suggested vendor will be, and then in the RFQ process, we'll start the negotiations at that point on price. So this'll put us back another two weeks or so, which isn't all that bad, we can make that work. It's such an important thing, that getting it right's more important than getting it done quick, so. The auditors are in fact here, they're, started their work today. So that's all I have in the staff report. If there are any other questions about what's going on, et cetera, I'll try to answer them here. If not.
Any question, any other questions or comments for Jack? Okay, let's move on, no public comments, so we'll move on to item number four on water bill adjustment ordinance.
Looking for a little bit of discussion and direction on how to handle. First off, if you look at the bill that we've attached in the packet, it identifies a financial adjustment to Residential Customers Water and Wastewater Utility Bill, so it's residential. And I guess the question is, we kinda need to be, thinking about how we wanna define residential, because if it's an apartment building, or an apartment complex, that's residential, but we don't consider them residential for our customers on our billing system. So is it, is it the use of the property as apartment building, or is it residential in our system versus a commercial account or a business account? How we want to look at them from there. Then we also have how this process moves forward. In item two, under two A, or A2, you'll see, the Board of Alderman may consider approving. How does that get to you? This ordinance doesn't describe it, this is Platte City's ordinance, so ultimately, how do you want these, if somebody's got a request, how do they get to you? Do they make the application to staff?
I think if the bill is clear enough, staff, how would it match?
Well then, and that may very well be the case, but this ordinance will not allow us to do that. Only the board can do it, because it says the board may consider.
What I would recommend is that they come to a meeting and present their case to us.
After they've talked to staff to see if they qualify, not under this. Now, the apartment buildings, do we have apartment buildings that have several, separate water meters for each resident?
Some of them, yes.
Okay, so that would be residential.
Yeah, but they're likely considered residential, because if it's a 5/8 inch meter serving one unit, it's gonna be residential.
And then the other, generally, the landlord pays the water bill, and it's added to the rent, so that might be a business.
Right, and end of the day, we, the way we were looking at it is, a leak's a leak, doesn't matter whether it's a residential, if it's to an apartment, all those folks, how that, how that happens, we wanted to make sure, I, I don't disagree with your logic, it makes perfect sense.
But at the end of the day, I mean, if something happens and there's a massive leak, will it matter if it's a commercial unit or residential?
Yes, because of law. It's not residential.
I know.
So if it's not residential, it would be a violation of city law.
Well, and I think, I think what Corey's talking about, Wayne, is, should we even have residential in there? Should it, it's a leak's a leak, should we address it? And, and ultimately, that becomes the function of where we're at on this policy, is where do we want to put the risk of loss? On, on, somebody has a frozen pipe in their, the reason this is very vital to, to resolve, we're going to have several claims in February, because we know some folks didn't have the heat on in their house and froze their pipes, and.
I thought this ordinance was for outside leaks, so I didn't think we had it for inside.
It doesn't specify whether the leak is outside and the city's area responsibility, or in the customer's.
Well, if it's in the cities, it doesn't matter, the customer's not gonna be charged. The question is if it's outside or inside where it happens.
That's what I thought, everything we were talking about was, was outside, blind leaks, between the service meter and the customers, or the.
From the meter to the house, that outside portion?
How, how would you determine that, though? I mean, that'd be pretty tough to determine, if it's outside, outside the physical structure, or if it's a leak on the inside.
That's why, that's why I'm saying we need like a plumbing plumber to look at it, or whatever, we need documentation that it was outside and not inside.
The ordinance requires that.
At the end of the day, I mean, if they drop a whole bunch of water, it doesn't really matter where it came from. They're gonna be looking to say, hey, how come it's, it's a relief on this? I mean, whether it's fell in their basement, or went out in their backyard, does it really matter?
I don't think it really specifies, once it's past the meter, I think this covers it. I mean, I didn't see where this talks about the meter to the house, it just says past the meter, it becomes the customer's responsibility.
It doesn't specifically, but there is an inference that can be made, if you go to the second page, the very last paragraph, paragraph three, it says, "The wastewater bill shall not be adjusted in many water leaks, the water enters the municipal water collection and treatment system and is treated prior to release." That is implying that it's going down your floor drains in your house and being treated, so that the wastewater's still being, the water still has to be treated at the other end. Although, it's incongruous when you look at the, so's the water, the water has to be treated to go in, but for whatever reason, this is implying that the wastewater, it's an indoor leak, not an outdoor.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, it, it could be either one.
And these are some of the things that we probably need to rectify in some form or fashion, to make this a little more understandable and less confusing. But ultimately, we won't be able to resolve all of these issues, 100% certain of that, before we get the first applications. They've already been, people asking for, I want relief.
These are primarily from frozen pipes, if you're hearing it now?
Yeah, yeah, because, yeah, people have, didn't open the sink base, whatever, and they get frozen pipe, and then it pops in.
And, and they're all, so far, they're all inside the house?
Well, we don't know yet, they, they've requested it, we've got a list of them, and we've indicated, we are coming to the board on the 8th to find out kind of how they need to be presented, because the ordinance doesn't say.
Well, I mean, it's kinda ironic, because the whole reason this came to us was because of the leak, obviously.
Yeah.
This is the whole purpose of bringing this out, was to address that, and trying to add clarity, and it seems like we should on our side to get another issue.
Well, and the bigger problem is, we used to have an ordinance that, for the outside leaks, if you had a leak outside, you could bring these in, and we would adjust your wastewater, but that's not in this ordinance. There's no provision for, if you have an outside leak, you're paying sewer, even though it's going in the yard, according to our ordinance.
So I have a question. To me, it sounds like we're in the very same scenario we were with the HOA, that we are discussing things that have happened prior to us changing this ordinance. So would that, again, become a case-by-case agreement that we'd have to come in to with each of these customers, because it's not currently in the ordinance? And it would, to me, it sounds like the same thing we're into with the HOA, of coming up with a separate understanding or resolution for each customer.
Well, ultimately, yeah, ultimately, this, whether they qualify is one thing. This ordinance lays out whether they can qualify, how much the water is, all those things, that there's a leak and where it's located. Right now, it's residential is basically an individual house, not all of those things. Any of those changes to that way it's worded now, I think would have to apply later, just like the current one, but I know we've got some individual homes, based upon some of the complaints already, that they, their pipes froze up. They didn't open the sink, they didn't have the heat on in the house, whatever.
Which, that's why I was, I was thinking you were working outside issue, because I think everyone should have a duty to, you know, take care of their pipes, and make sure they're not messing around with them while they're inside the house, right? That's why I was.
Even your insurance company will cover you if your house drops below 55.
But, whatever, I mean.
You're still a little responsible.
You still have to make sure, yeah, you still have to make sure that your pipes aren't gonna freeze inside your house. But an outside leak, I mean, you can't real, you can't always like help that.
Can't we just say C3, just to end that with, unless the leak occurs outside?
Well, yeah, I mean, there are two, two aspects, this is a multi-stage request from staff, and I've heard from John how to make the presentation. We can, from a staff perspective, we can inform folks, they need to come to the first meeting following their billing, so that's gonna be the February 20-something? They, they most likely won't have their bill by the first meeting in February. Get on public comment, I have a water bill issue, I think it meets the standard, present it to you all, then you ask staff to prepare something up for the next meeting, and then we can resolve it at that one. That timing issue, unless there's any other comments or changes to that, what Alderman Chevalier's indicated, will make, we can make that happen, based upon, it says me.
So, so can they, so do we have to wait until the comments speak?
During public comment, or can we add that as an agenda item for them half the time?
We could add it just as an agenda item.
Because that way, we can, we should be, I'd like to be able to question, ask questions, things like that.
It'd be better done under an agenda item, rather than under public comment, because public comment is not intended for discussion on that.
Right, and ultimately, that's the scenario, is how do they present the claim? This doesn't say how they do it.
I think they need to come to, come to city staff, staff means to make sure that it meets the criteria, then you, or the city administrator puts it on the, the agenda for the board to consider, you know, obviously with, center of the mayor, the board, whoever.
Right, I don't know, it should be a regular agenda item, rather than a public comment.
Yes, yes.
That's what I was wondering, is there any way that we could put that down as an open agenda item, that the agenda is to consider any, any water bill questions that we could have, that if somebody has a question, we can skip the agenda item, or leave it in there, so if somebody comes up, then we can.
My concern would be that, if we just have an open agenda item, the problem with that would be the fact that you might get somebody to come in here and just say, hey, I wanna complain about this. They haven't worked through staffs, with staff yet, about seeing if they qualify or meet the requirements. So in my opinion, and it just makes it a lot easier to administer, from my opinion, it should be an agenda item, one we've had a member of our community come to staff and talk to them about it, and they bring a form.
Well, if, if they go to staff in first place, you're gonna know if it needs to be on the agenda, I mean, it'll, it'll trigger, right.
And that would be the trigger, to put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
To answer your questions for this work session, I picked up two things. Do we wanna keep this isolated against the national, and do we wanna modify something that clearly states if water leaked outside, that they would not be responsible for wastewater? Is that the two things?
Well, the two, no, the two things are, how do we make the presentation to you? I think, I've got a consensus on how to get them to you. And the second is, this is what we have, what's wrong with it, what kind of corrections do you guys wanna see brought forward, so that we can actually have a, here's what the discuss, so that we can pinpoint definitively, inside, outside, like Alderman Chevalier's mentioned, residential versus commercial, those, those issues can be discussed in a little more detail.
Well, what we have doesn't solve the problem that brought this whole thing here, apparently.
Right, right.
So we need to fix that.
I'll oppose the ordinance, it is now ordinance, so I think we need to clarify it appropriately, and I think, I think it doesn't matter if it's residential or commercial at that point, if we're, if we're gonna enforce our ordinance.
If we can fix this and take care of it.
Well, the only concern about residential versus commercial is the potential impact to the budget, because commercial may have a four-inch line, and if it ruptures, it'll put, you know, in two days, two million gallons out.
It's actually residential.
But, well, the, the easier way.
The first part, my comment.
Right, the easier way may be do it, do it on, and here's what I can tell you, our, our meter sizing would be one way, the other way is, when we program someone in, it's, it's either a commercial, or it's a builder, which is a temporary one, or it's residential. And if it's in, on a single-family home, it's that way, or if it's a individually metered unit, these apartments down here, four-meter pits, eight meters in, the four pits for the, each unit in each building. Other ones, it's one unit, one meter, three or four-inch meter, and it's feed, so when it has a leak, it's a bigot.
So on the legal description of like those, it's commercial? Is the legal on those, and I'm going back to my banking days, of multifamily, multifamily residential?
For us, it's, the way we look at it is, if it's a water supply for one unit, it's residential, that you live there. If it's a water supply for multiple units, or if it's for any business, then it's commercial, or it's a builder account. And builders, to be quite frank, I wouldn't suspect that they should be to it, because they get those things in before the house is even built, it's not even occupied, they're gonna be out there working, if there's a problem, it's because they didn't do something right on their end.
So I don't know if they could come back and say, no, it's multifamily residential?
Yeah, ultimately.
Versus they true.
Ultimately, when we come to tweak this, I think what we tweak is how we define it, as it's defined in our billing system. That's easy enough, we have a standard policy, here's who qualifies, here's who doesn't. Residential is residential, and commercial is commercial, if it serves multiple units, it's commercial.
Should we look at section B also, where we were talking about adjustments, if it's inside the home, like no adjustment shall occur when any of the following exists, like we were talking about taking that ownership for what's inside your home?
No, I see.
Or not?
I saw under C, the very, the very last thing, where it says wastewater should not be adjusted, may, in many water leaks, there's water in its municipal water collection system, treatment system, and is treated prior to, unless the leak occurs outside.
Okay.
I mean, just.
Okay.
And if you, I mean, if you think there's somewhere else that it should be, I mean, come up with some action, I guess, I mean.
No, no, this is kinda new, new ground, Platte County, Platte City's the only one we were able to find that had the actual water deduct, everybody else was wastewater if it was inside, or if it was outside, so it's, if this was presented to you, there wasn't a whole lot of detailed discussion on it, it was approved, and, and now that we're, we've had some complaints about their water leaks, we know it's coming, and when we sat down to, how do we, how do we address these, we started looking at it going, oh boy, oh boy, so.
We need to have it addressed before they bring it to the board, don't we, so that, so that it would be active when they come to the, come to us with a problem?
Well, this, we can work under this one, we have a policy, it lays out what they have to do, we can make that happen. The question is, if we wanna change it, then how that happens? Ultimately, nobody's got a bill until February 4th or 5th anyway, maybe even the 6th, so if nobody's got a bill, nobody's gonna have the ability to bring a complaint to us on it, because it's based upon their bill. That's how the complaint arises. They know, we've had folks that have had leaks, know they've had a leak in their house because it froze up, and they're wanting to see what they can do. They, their leaks may have been small enough that they don't even meet the minimum threshold in here of double, twice, twice the average monthly.
Do we need to make a motion right now to possibly modify this for a future agenda?
Yeah.
Well, then I'm going to add the phrase, unless the leak occurs outside, to C3. A second.
Well, actually, before we do that, since this is more of a discussion, why don't we present a draft at the next board meeting, so that you all have the ability to, with some of the conversations here, that draft will be first reading, and you can go a little bit deeper into the woods on discussing it at that point in time, and make your motions then.
And we could do a second reading also, if the board so chooses.
That brings up a question, this, this came from Platte City. Didn't Smithville go through and determine that the drains and basements are not connected to our sewer system?
No, 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 no.
We do have drains connected to the sewer system.
All of the basement drains are. What we do know is, in the older part of downtown, some of the outside foundation drains are connected to the sewer system, that's our problem.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm checking on.
I don't know that we'd have to do first and second reading, because we could do the second reading in the first meeting in February, which would still be before.
It'll be before any complaints are formally brought forward, so.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Well, but if they bring, if they bring a complaint forward after the first, well, even. Well, but if they bring, if they bring a complaint forward after the first, well, even from now, or after the first of February, it's something that we would have to vote on at the next meeting, and then we could hear.
I think most of the lines will probably be drained here, but I don't know that we'll have a lot of access to it, so.
Yeah.
But I guess, one other question.
Well, and here's the other aspect of it. Nobody will be able to come to the board with a proper complaint by the first meeting in February, because the bills will come after, the packet's already out, so we're not changing the packet. So, the second reading could be February sixth. It would be resolved by the time we brought the first actual complaint. It would be after the ordinance. Because these folks have to actually see what their bill is, before they can lodge a request, so it's not.
But the issue will happen before they are presented.
Well, I don't, not necessarily. The ordinance says that they have to meet these standards and how they present it. They have to have their bill to make that presentation.
So if Chief pulls me over for going eighty on one sixty-nine today, and I turn up the speed limit before my court day.
He's still not going to agree with this rule?
Yeah. What, it may limit who gets what at the, depending on the applications that come in. But if somebody has a leak inside, this ordinance covers it, and that's where we're at. Technically, it doesn't differentiate, it doesn't say inside or outside, so either way you go.
And it does have provision for if a leak occurs inside.
Well, ultimately, they have to fix it, but we've got to see where things sit. So, we can have a draft available, you all certainly have the ability to do a first and second reading at any meeting at any time, if that's what you deem appropriate. State law says they shall be read twice, doesn't have to be at the same meeting.
Now, one question I have, and let's, this is looking at the commercial aspect versus, versus the residential aspect. If in a commercial setting, there's a water leak, and it puts out a lot of water, if they are on, if we take their wastewater, we're not going to adjust that at all.
Yeah, according to the, right. The wastewater bill shall not be adjusted, doesn't matter where it occurs, according to this. The last part is the most difficult part, and it, we hadn't gotten there, because this one's going to be the thing in the punchbowl. Number two, C two. We do not have a wholesale water purchase rate. That's part of our rate system, we don't have one.
Well, I mean, how did we come up with that calculation before?
Dan sat down and kind of, here's kind of what goes in, kind of what doesn't. But it's, rates are only set by this board, not by staff.
Can we come up with a rate?
Well, if, if there was a rate, we came up when we were dealing with, one of the water districts use our water. It was less than retail, and they wanted the cost of the actual water. And we didn't do that, but certainly, we should look at something here to.
Right, and ultimately, that's a schedule of fees adjustment, it's water.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, wastewater has to be publicly noticed for rate changes, but water does not.
Correct. Okay. So we can add a rate level. We can give you some estimates of what that will be, based upon our current billing information, our budget estimates, on what it takes to make the water. And then, kind of.
That's kind of what we thought, please, that's what I assumed, when I heard what was what a cost of making.
Right, and I would agree, I think that was the consensus, everyone agreed that that was what we were talking about. But when it got right down to brass tacks, we have this list of water rates in our schedule of fees, and our ordinance makes reference to that. This one isn't on it, so we'll need to adjust the, that aspect as well. We'll need to have that issue on there, water rate. And a new draft of this. We'll have a draft for first reading on the sixteenth on this matter, with the issues that need to be resolved, maybe highlighted in yellow, so that during the discussion, you guys can really discuss it and have your vote on those issues, make amendments as you see fit, and go from there. And then we can come back on the sixth with those corrections, based upon the motions made, and do a second reading. And then on the first meeting in February, second meeting in February, we can have some of these things on the agenda.
On the water rate fees, so we're not going to put an actual amount in here, right?
We'll have to, we'll have to put a wholesale.
Can't you say per the water rate schedule?
Well, yeah, oh, yeah, in the ordinance, right.
Because in the ordinance, you're going to have to change it.
It won't be in the ordinance, it'll be under fee schedule.
Right.
And in here, you would just reference the fee schedule.
Well, and you don't even, yeah, because it says, the adjusted bill shall charge the city's wholesale water purchase rate. We will put in the schedule of fees, the wholesale water purchase rate.
Well, we will reference in here the fee schedule.
I thought per the, I didn't know if you want to add.
Yeah, we can add it.
Let's add that, because then there's no ambiguity where that, where that relates to.
The rate's coming from, okay.
Sure.
Then we don't have to modify this ordinance every time we change water.
Right.
Any other discussion on water billing adjustments? Okay, let's move on to the next one, discussion on the ground, park ground, future meetings.
This one is another, staff needs some significant direction here. If you recall, we have had a farm agreement, a farm lease agreement for Smith's Fork Park hayfield and crop ground for several years. We have recommended extending that contract with the consent of the farmer on a year-to-year basis, primarily because for the last several years, the farm lease rate that you pull off Department Ag, it's been going down. But, so in that, with that rate, that per acre rate dropping over, over the last several years, the fact that we've had a farmer wanting to keep it at the higher rate was one of those, yes, well, we will certainly extend it, because we know the bid will not extend to that level if we bid it out. The farmer is no longer interested in continuing with that extension arrangement. So our options are, bid it out, based upon our best guess on numbers, that it's going to put our revenue down to about fifty percent of the total, from sixty-eight hundred a year to thirty-four hundred a year. Keeping in mind, some of the other identified issues in the, in the packet are, hopefully, we're going to have a trail running right through the middle of the hay ground and the farm lease, the crop ground, which will make it a little more difficult for them to, it's going to impact the value that they will have in, any farmer would have in leasing it. And one of the biggest contentions with the festival rental concept with, two years ago, or last year, it was Balloon Fest. And we had to try and figure out a way to get ourselves and get consent of the tenant, because there was going to be some damage to the farm lease ground. We've had another application, you've seen that Midwest Metal Mayhem Festival. They're already advertising it for us, our park. They advertised it before, as I understand, before it actually came to us. But we do not have a complete application from them. So I guess the question is, from a park administration, in the future, do we want this to be a farm ground? Or do we want to start the process of making this more of an amenity? We don't want to go through the process of bidding this out, if your thoughts are to not go there. There are two other minor issues, I've identified one of them in here, and that is, cross-country meets for the high school occur out here. They mow the hay in the area, they got to run so they can get through it, depending on where it fits in the year. And second, especially in the cropland area, in the cropland area, we regularly have, regularly meaning every three or four years, archaeological digs that go on down there, under the auspices of the Corps of Engineers. We don't consent, we have no consent to give, they just allow it to happen. When it does, it means no crop, we have, we don't get paid for that cropland lease, so, and there's one schedule.
Bob, go first, before you go, Bob, I just want, the choices we have here, we can continue to try to do this, or we can just say, that three to four hundred dollars we anticipate getting on that year, is that worth all the headache of limiting festivals and limiting cross-country team, et cetera? So there are a couple of choices here. We'll go first with Bob, then Wayne was next, and Melissa then.
Okay, my only question is, do we have, we have a Parks Master Plan, so how is this going to fit in whichever way we go to that plan?
Well, ultimately, if we're adding amenities, it goes through the Planning Commission, et cetera. But the operational aspects, according to the Parks Master Plan, are fully controlled by this board. Now, we do know that we are preparing to ask the voters to spend some money to build a multi-use trail right to the edge of this park, so it can run right through the middle of this park to connect to the stuff on the other, on the north side of the lake, or the river. So we know that's coming. That process will be, you know, April, May, June, depending on how the, the election goes. That concept will go to the Planning Commission, because it'll be an amenity to the park, because of the construction. But how we use it, on the other hand, is a little different. If we're going to rent it out to festivals, we don't, we no longer have to worry about the farm lease. And the open ground can be used for parking, or whatever else they want to use it for.
But that's my point, yeah. Within the Parks Master Plan, I don't think we have anything about farming it. We have a plan, a long-term plan, actually. So, this has to somehow fit into that, I believe.
Yeah, and, and the question is, when is it going to be required? At this point, we don't have any, other than the trail, we don't have any specific definitive this is going to happen. But we do have some, at least with this Midwest Metal Mayhem, if they're able to get their stuff together, it'll be a decision that has to be made on the rental of that area, so.
Wayne, you're next.
What will that do to the cost of maintaining the parks? Will we have to maintain that, or? Mowing, cutting hay, whatever?
Well, some of it, we, yeah, we will mow it just like we would any other open field, we mow it once a year, probably.
Once, once a year?
Yeah, maybe that.
So the cost is not astronomical.
Oh, no, no, no.
Take care of that.
Who mows it for the cross-country meets? Do they mow it?
No, well.
Brett?
Yeah, I have a question.
Who mows for the cross-country meets?
We maintain the course throughout the season. The last couple of years, they wanted to do some additional mowing. That has created kind of an issue with our farmer, as far as, as far as mowing to get spectators to different areas. That obviously, it would have been, I think we could maintain that area or mow those paths a lot easier without having to go through the farmer to get permission.
Okay, Wayne, you're next. Was that your question?
Yeah, that was mine.
Back to like the Parks Master Plan, I didn't read that before we came tonight. But my thought is, since we're looking at doing the trail, or the walking trail out to that point, you're looking at possibly a venue. I know there's been discussion in the past of a dog park, would this be a good area to, if we go that route, potentially put that in.
We're currently looking at a dog, doing a dog park right here where F, formerly F Highway, we don't have a new name for it yet.
Yeah.
But right where it goes across the land where the water tower is.
The county, the county park land?
Yeah, the county.
Trying to work that in.
Or trailer.
Yeah.
What's that?
Moving on, moving on. I'll go there, please.
So, so from that perspective, the dog park concept, we're trying to, we have a draft. Haven't finalized everything to go to the county, to work with Clay County, us, and potentially get a private entity involved, a charitable organization, to figure out how to best operate one on that county ground maintained by the state. So that it's centrally located, easy access to everyone.
And provide water right there from our water tower.
Right.
We're already working with, we've already.
But yes, yes, that is, that is something that, that we could, because it's rowing hills, it works great for cross-country courses, potential venues, but not very good for soccer fields, because you can't grade. It's too expensive to grade, because you have to bring in dirt on that prying dirt, because you can't excavate, you can't level. Which was the problem with the original soccer park concept down on the old cropland. Was, we were going to be moving dirt from one area into another and creating a big flat area, but the Corps said no, because of the archaeological stuff. So, that's where we're.
Corey, you were next.
Well, you asked one of my questions already, I know one of the biggest struggles we, I've ever heard, sitting here is constantly is the soccer field issues, and field issues, so that doesn't sound like this will solve that. The thirty-four hundred dollars is not worth just a few issues that have already been raised here, at least being our revenue. Trying to expand fields, and trying to do a venue, and trying to, you know, this, it's going to become the park eventually, might as well start today.
Well, what we should do then, is there, are there any other comments or questions?
I was just going to be commenting, I recommend we just turn over to Parks and be done with it.
Well, and that, then what we'll have to do is, is that policy an ordinance?
Not yet, no, it's consensus, it's going to happen that way, because I haven't heard anyone say, no, 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 no.
Do we need, do we need to make an ordinance, or just a policy?
No, we have to make a determination whether or not, ultimately, based upon your recommendation, we should bid this out. I don't hear a single person saying that, so we're not going to bid it out. The process of doing the rest of it, it's going to take some programming work on Brett's part, this was the first step, that's been answered. Whether Midwest Metal Mayhem gets their application together appropriately, that's a whole nother thing.
That's a non-issue, I mean, that's a non-issue for this.
Yeah, but, right.
But I think it makes sense for the benefit, the benefit of the thirty-four hundred dollars a year creates far too many issues for parks, for events, for cross-country, for everything else related to this.
Well, and the other aspect, the thirty-four isn't even guaranteed, because.
It's year to year.
And if the, if the cropland gets taken out with an archaeological dig, we don't get that, that may be fifteen hundred of it, or twelve hundred.
If we start marketing this as we can have festivals here, I think that is huge.
I think it changes the way we're looking at it.
We, you know, for many, many years, hiring it out, releasing it out for farmland, because we didn't have a lot of activities going out there, made sense. But now the fact that we're going to be having a trail going up into that area, and cross-country and everything else, our goal is to increase the utility of that area. And if we, in my opinion, if we stymie our own growth because we're leasing out the property, it just doesn't make sense. So we'll bring that forth at our next board meeting for a vote by the.
We need to also determine like.
Oh, actually, no, just, we'll change the policy.
Yeah.
I'm just curious to me, how are we going to determine like fees and stuff like that for using that land?
That's part of the, yeah, that's part of the work that Brett's going to now do.
That's part of the event application process.
Right, but the fees and how that works, I'll leave that up to Brett and Matt to do the legwork, finding out what other venues similar, similarly situated would be able to do. Obviously, most of that's an open field, I don't know what the guy in New York got in the late sixties, but we want a better deal than that, so.
At least some better cleanup.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll, we'll get that figured out, but Brett now has a direction. He doesn't need to put the bid out, so we'll move from there.
Very good. All right, next item of business, discussion for police clerk position.
I am not certain how deep into the woods the discussion has been with you, this board in particular, or the board in general, related to the separation of powers responsibilities as a result of some state legislative changes in fifteen and sixteen, and the Supreme Court ruling, or changes in September of sixteen, related to segregating court functions and prosecutor assistant slash police clerk functions. In smaller towns, forever, the court clerk handled the case file, made it for the court. When the prosecutor came in on the day of court, would give that court file to the attorneys, who would go talk to the prosecutor, who'd make their amendment right in the court file, and it would get brought back to the clerk, and then it would get resolved. Supreme Court issued a ruling in twenty sixteen that said, no more effective July of seventeen. Court clerk is its own position. The other duties are of the prosecutor's assistant, or the police clerk, have to be segregated. They gave us, everybody, a rather short window, from September to July, to get all that done. For us, it made it impossible, because our budget was already done by the time it happened. So anything we would have done would have been an amendment. Ultimately, two things have occurred since I wrote this. Number one, the powwow with Chief, Jeanette Chastain. Number one, the powwow with Chief, Jeanette Chastain, Dan Tolekas and myself, and we believe we've figured out a way to get us through this little knothole of the, until we get to the budget. That is reassigning duties and moving some people around a bit, changing how we operate to at least get us through this knothole so that we can discuss the full-time position for the next budget. Numerous options there, but I primarily wanted to bring this up because this, this one's one of those, we're getting firsthand information from the Supreme Court because our clerk is the president of the Missouri Association of Court Clerks. So they contact her and have her get the information out to everybody. So we know what they're going to be looking for. We know what their local audits will be and who's going to do them. So the segregation that we've completed over the last six weeks or so, and I think the bulk of it had occurred, who's going to do what over last, the end of last week and today resolves this. But I wanted you to have at least a, a Jack version, a brief understanding of what we're talking about, and then let you ask me questions so that we can get you prepared for the budget discussions that are becoming in several months. Because it's going to be bigger than what we think.
Hold on, Melissa.
So have you already started working on job description and duties for that position?
Yes, and that's going to be, several other communities have already got it. Carney's already got it, several other ones have got it. So we're going to pull that, because there are two aspects of it. Some of it are preparation of files for the prosecutor. Most communities merge that position with the police clerk to get more officer time in the street and allow them less paperwork time in the office and handling the phone calls and taking the initial non-emergency stuff that doesn't need to go to dispatch necessarily. Those things, so they're two similar but separate functions. And how we actually manage that, so yeah, yes, we have.
So second question, and I don't know for sure how this all works. Is this a position that had to be post-certified or just like a clerical position?
It's a civilian.
Okay.
Yep.
I think John, you're next, and Corey and Jeff.
Okay, this may be a stupid question, but is there a way to keep one person and just have two part-time jobs and that person do like Monday, Tuesday, do one thing, Wednesday, Thursday, next thing?
One day, what?
No, one person can't do both of them.
Yeah, because they're trying to separate those out, and they don't want the same person doing the job whether they've paid.
So it's just a person, it's not necessarily a job, it's the person doing it.
Yes, yes. And it's twofold, and I'll, I'll give you an example as to the scenario. Going in to this discussion over the last six weeks, we had a court clerk, and the court responsibility out of this same thing is that the court has to have somebody to take payments when the court clerk, Jeanette, is gone. So we have someone who is, was a court clerk in another jurisdiction, has been our assistant clerk who can do that work during the, the times where our, our court clerk is gone. That person also has all of the knowledge based upon prior experience of what the police clerk and the PA work is. So that person is going to be the one doing the, the bulk of the file prep for the prosecutor and that, that portion of it. So it's going to be prosecutor's assistants now, no police clerk necessarily. But when that person goes to that duty, they can no longer take money, ever. So we have to bring two new people in, into the, who haven't been trained up on any of it, on how to do that process. And Dan and his staff are working on the best methodology to implement that so that we have, and it's just like a, it's the appearance of impropriety. You have to have them separate, and there's no crossover. If you cross over, you're in violation. Even if it's answering a phone call, that would be a violation.
Just a couple of questions. Do we have room?
Well, yeah, right now, it's not a function of room because we're not adding a new person, we're just splitting the duties up a bit. So we can make it work. Budgetarily, we're going to have an issue.
And number two, as this gets more formalized and we get the people hired on, is there any kind of duties that they can take back from Platt City, or will that still continue in the same direction?
Um, no, we're going to, that's the, the primary function of Platt City is the nine-one-one dispatch stuff. They do accept non-emergency when no one's here. So some of that, it won't save us any money, but Platt City only does a certain amount of it anyway. When someone calls and just wants some advice or information from the police, they, all we can do is send you an officer on a non-emergency basis. So some of that we'll be able to pull in-house.
What they'll do is, what has the potential to do down the road, the right person to put in the job and properly train this to provide better service to our citizens when they call. Instead of just giving them, let me transfer you to dispatch and have an officer contact you. Once that person's trained, that's experienced, and you've got their feet under them, that's confidence, they'll, they'll be able to answer questions, maybe say transfer calls like that, and get folks to call the police on a quicker server, and get a thing here in a more efficient manner. There's also certain administrative duties and clerical stuff that frontline supervisors or shift sergeants are doing, that we see shipping goodness position, to get those officers, those sergeants out of the office and back to the frontline supervision on the streets where we do the more.
The more vehicles on the street makes the performance better.
And we can get one person, like one person managing all of the report requests. We know they're going to be done the same way every time, and get the lines for sunshine on, and it'll be more efficient, it's much less likely to have a mistake as opposed to having three, four, five people doing that. Just, I guess it matters who happens to be playing today.
Yeah, okay.
That's kind of how we approach it, wanting to be there four years down.
Any other questions?
Jeff's last.
I think, this is hopefully a transition comment. I think this is a great thing to bring forward on the departmental reviews. Here's something, here's something we see coming down the road that we need to be thinking about. Here's what we.
This one just started moving faster than.
Yep.
The, what we could, we.
Well, just a result of the laws imposing on us to be compliant with the law enforcement. I'm going to ask, John, do you have any comments or concerns about this discussion? What we're doing at this mall? Anything to add to this?
I'm very comfortable with the tenor and where you're all headed with this discussion. So, I mean, Jack's got the, Jack machine, he can totally identify. It's not, I'm going to Chicago, I'm going to the place.
Very good. Okay, Sean. All right, we'll move on to item number seven, development department review. Jeff?
Yes, I have a slideshow-ish type thing, packet, whatever you want to call them, before you. This first one we've done is based upon somewhat of a format that Alderman Blumker had suggested that he'd seen. So I used it generally, and I'll go through, if you look at it, the budget numbers you're going to see when we get there are a little, they have to have an explanation. Number one, they are, they are all based upon the priorities set for this budget, and we took previous year's budgets and aligned them into the current priorities. It doesn't mean that in 2013, these were the same priorities. It means that that's how that much money was spent if we were doing that same priority then. And also, it also goes back a few years when there were two separate departments of community and economic development. Those budget numbers merged those two accounts throughout. So that was important to, to highlight, that the budget numbers aren't, they're representative. That's all we can say. And then the separate aspects of the economic side and the community development side will be discussed separately. One of the things is to understand the organizational structure of the department. I have a list there of the organizational structure. It has everything but the employee names. Apologize for that, didn't even dawn on me to add that. Obviously, I'm the development director. The next level down is administrative coordinator, and that's Brandy Sugar. And then Micah Joseph is the development department communications coordinator. The utility, and then, well, to stop real quick, there are two items in red that are not in the budget, or in the system yet, but may be coming later. So we went ahead and put them in. But the other filled one, the utility inspector one is Dennis Witt. And the first building inspector is Sam Cowan, and the second is Doug Nutelsky. We have in this current operating budget, the code inspector one will come on six months in, and they will take some of the responsibilities of Dennis Witt, who's currently the utilities slash code inspector, so he can focus on the utility side. And then we'll have a separate code inspector who handles weeds, you know, the nuisance code stuff. And that will pull all of our other inspectors out of having to come to court to testify unless, of course, it's related to not getting a permit or a building code violation of some kind. And then the other one is utility inspector two. That's the position that we pulled out of the contract with HDR to have a separate budget amendment. It will be up for approval on the sixteenth for the second reading of that budget amendment. If that approves, we'll immediately start the process of getting that position on and in so that they will know the contract and they will be fully able to basically run that project from an inspection side, hit the ground running. So that's the structure of how we're set up. The next page is the phases of what we do.
So, Jack, back on that utility two, that, that was to save us money on the.
Yes.
Just to hire that director to save us money?
Yes. The contract is going to be two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred dollars for about thirteen and a half months' work. We've got this project, this position in for, I think it's seventy or eighty for the, the year, that, that same thing. And the next project, first sewer project, is required to have the second one to happen. It's going to have the same need. So this position will likely last every bit of two years or more, and we'll have the same savings on that one. That one won't even come up because we'll have a position in-house. So what, overall, for about a hundred and fifty thousand, we're probably going to be saving about three hundred to three fifty by doing it this way. As it relates to what we do, Alderman Blumker had given a list of, you know, thoughts to, for us to throw out to you. The big successes, the biggest misses, where we could have done better, those kinds of things, so that you can kind of get a better understanding of where we are and what we're doing. For the building and code side, the big thing is, we bumped up in the BCB EGS is the Building Code Enforcement Group Survey. It's an ISO rating, an insurance rating system for communities who have building codes. We were a seven, which was the first time we'd ever been rated, and it, it provides for new homes built, that one provided for new homes built after 2011 when that rating came in, they were eligible for better underwriting rates for their insurance. This year, when we did the analysis, we'd moved up to a five. That's the same rating as Liberty or many other communities that have a lot more money they're throwing at this. So it was a significant improvement. I was hoping that we'd at least get to six. We went all the way to five. So haven't seen any boil out yet on what that means for underwriting for insurance for homes built after. This rating came out, but the lower the number, the better.
Is that a marketing number that could be used to help pull in development?
Well, it's not really development that'll impact, it's the homeowners. The homeowners, the one you buy a home in Smithville.
It's its law.
Yeah, you have the, if you get a new home built after March of 2017, I think it is, your underwriting standards are going to be much better for your insurance than other, well, the house that was built the month before, to be quite frank. So yes, we would market it along with our low taxes, along with our, you know, the other performance stuff that we, there's schools to bring people in. Based upon the BCB EGS, those guys, the ISO folks, they base their rating system on the staffing levels you have, the training levels of your staff, the number of permits you issue, and the code, how recent your code is, how new it is, and whether you made drastic changes to it. If you kept the basic one, it's easier for them to evaluate. What we did when we adopted our code some time back was, we adopted the same code that Overland Park and Kansas City did, because they have all the engineering staff and they did the evaluation. And we tried to make it easier for the Home Builders Association of Kansas City to understand that we are, you build a home here, you're going to get the same deal as you do in Kansas City. Some changes based upon their expertise, and it seems to be working well. What we didn't anticipate was how quickly our growth hit us. Their standards are seventy-five single-family residential permits per inspector. We're over that already. Now, the good thing is, they don't come back to review us for another five years. And we also have codes that are, you have to keep them within five years at the time, so we're okay until we get to 2022. However, we're on the 2012 codes. Everybody uniformly through most of the metro region skipped the 2015 version, but the 2018 version's out. So we're reviewing those now. That'll be the next big thing we do, is to go to the next level of code stuff. One of the protective measures that we've had in place is our current utility inspector, Dennis is a former building inspector, so he's able to fill in some of the gaps when we, if we get too busy. The big thing for code enforcement side is that we are no longer fully operational under a report-only status. That means, it used to be, when it was two of us, myself and one inspector, if somebody complained about the grass in somebody's yard, that's when we went and looked. We didn't have the ability to go out and do it. But now, regular patrols, he's got several functions doing MS4 and all the other stuff. When he sees it, he's able to follow up. He can't keep up fully with it because he's got so many utility things going on. The new position bringing on will make this even better so that, once we get somebody in the system, we're able to keep on them until they understand that mowing your grass so that it isn't two feet tall next to someone in a regular subdivision is unacceptable, and if you don't like that proposition, you'll have to talk to the judge. Start that enforcement. Once the word gets out, it starts to get better, but we're growing faster than, than I think, we're not going to be able to end code enforcement itself. And as I said, the budget does include it, and now with that new budget position in there, it will give more time for the MS4 work that we're just keeping our head above water on. As it relates to the utility side, next page, the utility inspection MS4 stuff, that's keeping mud out of the streets as best we can, if we've got erosion control problems, that kind of stuff, and making sure that all of our utilities that are installed underground, whether it's our contract or it's a developer doing it, is done in accordance with the plans. You can drive through some subdivisions, harbor lakes, for example, and you know where the utility crossings are. And that's simply because it wasn't inspected at the time. The ground underneath it is settled, the pavement had to go with it, and it's bumpy. Don't think that's going to happen in the future. One of the key elements is, we added the GPS unit to that department and that function this year so that we can start the process of MS4 work, which is mapping the entire city of all the inflows and outflows of storm sewers. One of the best things that we did this year, I think, is we worked with the Northland Caps program, which is, I'm sure you've all heard of Northland Caps, local high school students. And what we asked them to do was to come in, take a look at our GPS unit and our programs, and get an understanding of what we're looking for, and then write us a document so that anybody that comes in from another department, or if we get a new employee, not a lot of training, here's a document that tells you exactly how to use that unit to take it, and how to get it onto a GPS map, and how to make that map move. We started with them in early September, and they are now completed with that. Wonderful kids and provided a great product. It makes it easier for things to happen. Once we start getting a little more time for the utility inspector, he'll actually be able to use it in a substantially more frequent methodology. With the utility inspector position as well. With the utility inspector position as well, we have been able to have zero enforcement actions referred to the court for erosion control measures or whatever. The utility side, he's been able to either shut them down or put the thumbs to them, this needs to be done and by this date, and they're doing it. All of them are doing it. As much squawking as it occurred when I first got here 10 years ago about how horrible that was from builders, we implemented it and there's no squawking. The administrative improvements, we have an administrative coordinator. We didn't have that position, and she's been on now for a little over two years. Some of the stuff that she's done is implemented a filing system that we had been discussing for some time that identifies each parcel of ground in the entire city and creates a file for it. We have, that's the stuff in the hallway. She now has every building permit that's ever issued that we have a copy of is in a file in there. She's went through and literally pulled every box apart, and they're in there. That allows us to research older properties a lot easier, because it used to be open a book and find out where potentially it was and kind of guess. Now we know, all we have to do is find the parcel ID, go find what house is on it, and we can determine what permits have been issued. Each of them also have specialty utility files that can go in there if there's a problem with some utility, a water line problem, a water meter issue, something along those lines. So she was instrumental in getting all those files created and into the system with help from Linda and others. So that's been very helpful from her productivity and everybody else's, to be quite frank. She also handles all the scheduling of inspections for all the inspectors, and that helps us maintain an up-to-date inspection result so that they get entered. The inspector doesn't have to worry about where he's got to be, he's just got to go there, do it, and enter it into the system, so that we're not waiting a day or two to determine what's the next inspect.
Before you continue, I want to just back up to that separate utility files for each parcel. One of the things that does, if there are any questions about any home or building in the city currently, instead of trying to go to several different places to find all the information out, it's all in file, the only place permits were issued, when occupancy were issued, if there were issues with utilities, et cetera, kind of one place per property. So it makes it much, much easier and saves a lot of time for that, and Brandy has done a great job of that.
Is there any discussion of looking at scanning all that and keeping those records paperless instead of in files?
Well, the vast majority of them, we have a retention schedule. The vast majority of those documents were 30, 20, depending on how old it was, years beyond the useful life, we didn't need to keep them. The other documents, ultimately, yes, there is. From our perspective, the bigger need is the large-scale, large-format stuff, so we can take in construction plans and the like, all those plans over there. That would be more preferable from a, to get that done first. We have some files over there that are literally blueprints. We've posted some of them on, but some of those are interval for us to figure out what's going on. We didn't have any for Hawthorne, if that gives you an example of all the snafus we had over there. We didn't have any of those maps.
Just the flood.
Yeah, so, right, the flood wiped them out. So with that, if we have digital copies of it, we're going to have them in multiple locations, and this building or whatever can get wiped out, and we're still going to have them, so that we can look at them, because the water department, when they do utility locate, sometimes it, the old stuff doesn't have a tracer wire in it, those files, they can, oh, here it is, this is the ASBIL. So when we identify those, it helps us speed the process up. So that's the bulk of the department. The rest of it is planning and zoning side. That is a 100% read and react. When something comes, we put the thing to the plan. I didn't put it in here because it's generally what I do, and if you guys had any questions, we can, we'll certainly get to that here at the end here. The last portion is the communications coordinator. It's 96 days old, so it's really new. We do know that the EDC has requested that he provide metrics on, social media metrics on contacts, all the various things. We know we're up on all levels of it, some good, some bad, but we do know that the communication overall is expanding greatly on social media. More people know who we are and what we are. The positive interactions that we're seeing on these metrics are greatly outnumbering the negative ones, and that includes ironically on Twitter, which is all negative, that's, I think that's their byline, all negative, all the time. We're not doing too horrible. When it's bad, sometimes it's, oh my goodness, it's like an old rock day or something.
What's bad about that?
Yeah, nothing. But the position is changing as we learn. When we did the interviews for this position, one of the things that we highlighted to ourselves and all of the applicants, that this position was kind of going to be developed by the person that we hired, because their expertise and where they were were going to format where we're going. They are primarily in charge of handling the EDC strategic plan implementation level stuff. For example, we have the festivals funding stuff. They'll be the one running that. He's running the marketing, the day-to-day marketing conversations with our consultant. They're coming in next week to start conversations with us, staff-wise, so that they can be prepared to go to the EDC. So rather new position. Here we are.
Jack, I brought this up with the previous city of the chair a while back. I meant I haven't been out there lately to check, but given the issues that have sprung up on Twitter recently, do you know, has anything ever been made to put all our official things directly on the front page of the city website? So here's our, here's our development coordinator Facebook page, here's our city Facebook page, here's our city Twitter.
Yeah. I will tell you, to my, the best of my knowledge, no, we haven't tried to put it on there because we've got several things rolling all at once. Once the contract is identified and we start in the reevaluation process, when that all happens, we'll be able to do it. It's just there's so many balls in the air, don't want to do it once and then do it again.
I hear what you're saying, but honestly, I mean, it's a 10-minute task and would really help alleviate some of these vague profile things that are going on now.
And it may, it may eliminate the confusion for some. Some of, some folks jump on board purely to do it, but yeah, I mean, ultimately, we're going to be going through the redesign process, however that happens with the, with the successful bidder. We'll do it then for sure. Ultimately, yeah, no, I fully understand. We can certainly address that as it comes up.
Well, I think, I think something like that, too, will then help alleviate some of the fake statements being made out there supposedly by me and by staff members and, yeah.
Well, it won't, it won't alleviate those statements. Those statements are going to occur.
Well, but it will give people who read those a place to go to read what really is going on.
Because the only other way to find is going to go to Facebook page and search it, and you don't know which apartment it is.
Right, right.
So if we have it on our city website, then you know you're right.
Yeah, yes.
You can hit the right site.
Well, so Mayor, I mean, just real quick, are you saying you didn't get a new license for Chris?
It's too early for me to move it here, so.
The next item is the departmental budget page. You've got fiscal year 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, as well as 18, but 18 is obviously three months old. That is the growth. You can kind of see our economy in a nutshell, especially when you look at fiscal year 13 to fiscal year 17 in revenues. We've more than tripled our revenues in that timeframe.
In expenditure.
Yes, yes. Now, now the expenditure side in 13, I would suggest to you that the economic development side had 3,000 total in expenditures in 13. That was the total budget for economic development. This past year, I think it was 120, which includes the marketing contract and all the other amenities associated with that, so that substantially changed it. And I apologize, no, there it is, okay. So that gives you the revenue and the expenditures of the department over time as we have progressed. And lastly, the last page here, kind of gives you some relevant highlight points as to why those numbers are so much higher than previous years. In part, for example, fiscal year 16, when the numbers really started rolling up, we had new vehicles being bought, two of them, one for building inspection and one for utility inspection. We had 15, 12 and 15-year-old vehicles that were well-worn.
Were dead, I mean, they were so bad.
Well, we had brake problems and other things. If they're not daily drivers, they can be used, but if you try to drive them on a daily basis and you're putting the miles on them that we're starting to put on stuff, they just weren't working. Fiscal year 17, we added the additional building inspector and an additional vehicle, so we have three new vehicles for the department. And then I've unfortunately cut off the top one, the note on the top, but as I recall, that note associated to that was the marketing contract. It throws in the, that number went, it's up, what, 80,000? 70,000 of that was simply the marketing contract budget, 70.
And new position, right?
Yeah, yeah, the new position.
Michael would be in there.
Yeah, yeah, he would be in that as well. So as things move around, that's where we go. So we've had substantial changes, but we have been making progress. I will tell you, this year, this last year, last eight, nine months, from my perspective anyway, it's been a little easier to deal with now that I have some, what, from my perspective, are fairly clear and consistent board priorities. We know what we're working for, what it is you're looking for. It's only been going now since a few months, but we knew what the priorities were back when the budget was approved. So it allows us to try and focus our priorities to what the priorities this board listed. And I think as we proceed along this process outside development department, I'm changing hats here, but we start doing the other departmental reviews, I think you'll start seeing that aspect of it as well. That'll become even more important. So that's presentation from me. Now it's questions from you.
First of all, thank you. I think this is extremely helpful. I think part of the goal of this, too, is this molds nicely into a packet, which then becomes part of an orientation packet for the elected members of this table. And then the other question I have is just broadly, what do you see as your challenges for the next coming year that we need to be aware of, and what are the opportunities that you have that we need to make sure we're aware of and helping with?
Sure. The biggest challenges are going to be the amount of growth. I met with a developer today, I'm a commercial developer, but, and they were literally discussed with me, we weren't certain whether we were going to go commercial or go residential up here, because they just see all kinds of dollar signs in the residential market. Absent, his words, "absence something catastrophic happening in Washington or Jeff City," I don't see this residential market slowing down anytime soon, speaking in the three to five range. So that is going to be a huge challenge for us to stay ahead of it. Our comprehensive plan calls out the requirement that we have high-quality buildings in our community, and the only way we can ensure high-quality buildings is make sure we have high standards in our construction and that we actually inspect to it. So with those things going on, we're going to have staffing issues that are going to continue to press, and unfortunately for our department, it's really, really hard to have enough independent revenues from our department to pay for itself. It's just too hard. I don't know any communities that do it. But ultimately, as you can tell, our revenues have steadily increased, and the building from, from a bigger, broader perspective, not just departmental, but when we do these 155 homes, which what we had this year, this last year, that's over $300,000 in sewer impact fees, over $300,000 in water impact fees that allow us to do some of these projects. You know, impact fees alone for sewer almost match a half-cent sales tax, to give you a perspective of how much money that is. And we have completed every water project on the CIP list, and we still have revenue left over in the water impact fees for future growth. The impacted by growth, that is a restriction there. So for my department, all of that's going to be, the more infrastructure we have in place means more development. So it's a double-edged sword. I do not know, truthfully, what the bottom line is going to be with the marketing contract. So I'm incredibly interested to see how that impacts. We'll, working with the EDC, we'll figure that out. I think that's our, our, our next big thing we've got to be prepared for. I think that's going to be very important for us, and as always is the case in every department, but in mine especially, staffing moves doggone quick. You know, if we ended up this coming year with 230 building permits, two inspectors can't handle that much work. It may require us mid-season to do something. So that's what my concern is, is just, I don't want to get ahead of too much, but I certainly don't want to get behind. If we get behind, you just, you never can catch up and you're, you know, you've got a dollar chasing a nickel, and every time you do that, it's wasteful. So that's, those are my biggest concerns, how, how well we can keep up with the speed of our growth.
It's a good problem to have.
Yeah, it's good.
You know, if you're going to have problems to solve those, the kind of problems you want to have, because those provide tremendous opportunities for us as a community and as leaders. I just want to comment, too, on the department review. As you know, Jack has been very busy the last couple of months in his additional role, and he has been bringing a lot of hours to everybody. These are the kind of things we like to see from a department review, and we would expect, Jack, that our other departments, when they come up, that they provide us the same type of information here.
Yeah, it'll be in the same format, everything. The tweaks that I've already identified today will be made on the next one. I believe Parks is next in February. I don't recall, but Parks is next. That one, that one I know. I'll worry about the next one when we get down there. Dan Talekis needs to have all the kudos for the paperwork and how, all the notes and all the colorization and all that. Dan and I had a conversation, here's what I'm looking for, I think this is going to be the important methodology that they are going to want to know, and he said, I'll see what I can do, and it was first blush. I was like, oh, never. He had, he had his comments here written in just to explain it to me, and I was like, can you make them permanent? And he did. So we'll do the same concept with each of the other departments as we proceed. Thank you.
Anything else?
Oh, I was going to move to the end for the detective session. Six ten, five, three, two, one, one.
Senator Alderman.
Bert, please call roll.
Alderman Booth.
Aye.
Alderman Chiveller.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Blumker.
Aye.
Alderman Arnold.
Aye.
Alderman, just, uh, sorry. Alderman Arnold.
I already said aye.
No, it settles already.
Oh, I voted twice.
More. More.
More.
Go flush your bathroom.
Long day.
We stand adjourned.
Special immunity powers, am I, Bob? You got two jokes?
I have to tell you, I can't tell how many people I've spoken with in the last two months, and I've seen what I mean by that. Hey, Leonard, are we still here?
Yeah, we're still up there.
But they, Reese Stancher.